Thank you. I would like to call the meeting of the school committee to order. It is Thursday, September 19th. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV. Audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start out with public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the committee tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move on to good news.
I have some good news.
Dr. DeAndrea, the floor is yours.
I'd like to share with you a letter I received from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. It says, it's a letter written to April Rossi, and they CC'd myself.
Who is it from specifically?
It is from Mildred LeFever? LeFever?
Okay.
The MASC president. I don't know if I'm pronouncing the last name. It says, "On behalf of the MASC Board of Directors, I'm writing to let you know..." Mrs. Rossi, I just wrote, it says, "Dear Ms. Rossi." Okay, so they're not talking about me. Reading the letter to her. Okay, just make that clear. "On behalf of the MASC Board of Directors, I'm writing to let you know that you have been selected to receive MASC's Division VII All-State School Committee 2024 Award. This honor recognizes your contributions to the Wareham Public School District, both through your commitment to the role of the school committee and through your advocacy and efforts on behalf of the highest-quality educational opportunities for the children of the district. So I just wanted to say congratulations to April on this honor."
And I want to know, does that mean she gets two votes at the assembly?
That is definitely an unexpected honor. So I appreciate that.
So there will be an awards presentation at the MASC Leadership Life Member Awards Dinner on Friday, November 8th.
Well, we know I don't miss the conference, so I'll definitely be there.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Great news. Anybody else? It'll be a hard act to follow, so we will move on to minutes of the meeting from 7:25. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? I would just add that there was one vote that was three to two. It said three to three at the end about Mr. Fitzgerald and the leave of absence, well, not leave of absence, but the, yeah. But that was it. So if there are none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? 5-0-0. Thank you. Our new student representative, Emma McWilliams, can't be with us tonight. She had a sports scheduling problem last time, and this time she's unable to be here. So she will be joining us soon. I've reached out to her and explained the role of the student representative, and so we're looking forward to her reports shortly.
Did you tell her that was strike two?
We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have the superintendent's newsletter in your packet. I'd like to start with a gift from Wareham Community Television, a check for $2,445 to the Wareham Public Schools for the renewal of the Adobe subscription. This is a gift that we've been receiving from WCTV for many years, and it goes to that subscription and helps out with our AV program and used in the classroom. So I thank them for the very generous gift and ask for your approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, and thank you, WCTV. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0.
Thank you. And in addition, our, a couple of payroll warrants and a bill warrant that I ask for your approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0.
That's all I have. Thank you.
That was the fastest we've gone through, six agenda items in our history.
Because you haven't been a part of my policy review committees before.
We'll move on to item number seven, school committee report. So we have a policy review and subcommittee update. April?
Yes, so the policy review subcommittee dates are as follows: October 9th, November 13th, January 22nd, February 12th, and March 12th. They will be conducted via Zoom, and the meetings will start at 5:00 PM. We do have a full committee. So usually at the first meeting, we're searching for members still, and luckily, we've had some returning members. So our school committee representatives are myself, is the chair, and Brennan. For administration, we have Matt and Dr. Schwam. For principals, we have Tracy Cote and Bethany Chandler. Teachers, we have one from each school. So we have Patty Cooney, Karen Wagner, and Beth Giafrida. And then we have four parents as well. We have Allison Preston, Kelly Cherbuck, Tricia Brajali, and Carrie McWilliams. So I thank everyone for their willingness to participate in the policy review. It does help us keep the district going when we review and update the policies that we all need to adhere to. So that is my update on that.
Jeff, you had a question?
How long have you been doing them via Zoom?
Um, since 2020, I believe, since COVID, right, Jamie? Am I right?
Yeah, the school year 2020.
So presumably, you're not continuing to do them for COVID reasons. Do you find that it maximizes attendance by having them?
I feel like I have pretty, really good attendance with it being on Zoom. I think with other people having other commitments or, you know, being a part of other committees, it does, it's been very effective and efficient to have them on Zoom. I feel like we get through everything really well. People seem really prepared and willing to participate in any discussion that we have for policy review.
That was my only question. My own experience with other organizations is the larger the group, the less productive Zoom is in terms of pulling people into the discussion.
I feel like this is the perfect-size group for it to remain on Zoom. I think if we did have a larger district and had a larger quantity of people, that it might be an issue. But it's, I feel like they're, and we also have Jamie in attendance at them as well, doing minutes with us. So that's definitely...
I trust your judgment. I was just curious. Okay.
Yeah, I've had really great attendance that way, and it seems to be working.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, April. So next up, we have the annual MASC resolutions. So MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, creates these resolutions, and they lobby with the state legislators to try to make some changes, some policy changes, and some legislative changes. And so it's our task to go through the resolutions and say which ones, as a committee, we agree with and endorse. And then April will represent us at the annual meeting and have a say in what's going forward. So I guess we'll look through these one by one?
Yeah, what we've done historically, for those that aren't aware, is we do go through each of the resolutions. The resolutions are typically either sponsored by MASCE or sponsored by another district's school committee, sometimes a combination of the two. There are moments where we may agree on parts of a resolution, but not all of a resolution. If we do have anything that we wish to strike, adjust, or amend, I will present how we feel at the delegate assembly, where I am the Wareham delegate. So if there is anything that anyone has issue with or we feel might be, we would vote for it one way if something was worded differently or if this line was struck from it, I would then present that at the delegate assembly as an amendment for us to be able to vote for it. And then I carry our collective vote to the delegate assembly and vote with our collective voice.
Okay. Jeff?
As a start to this important subject, I'd like to hear our superintendent's thoughts.
On?
On Resolution 1 regarding MCAS.
I disagree with it.
That's very, very succinct.
Well, I mean, I can go into details. I think, I think, well, first of all, it says a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately. I don't believe that that's what the ballot question says. It's only to not eliminate MCAS, but to not make it a requirement for graduation, which I don't agree with that either. So to, I believe MCAS assesses our students on the skills that we, our core mission as schools academically. And taking MCAS away would be a big mistake. We need to measure the progress our students are making and how effective we're being in our instruction. And MCAS is a good test, in my opinion.
Jeff?
I would just, I agree with you. I would just add that we have now a goal for the superintendent that involves not the absolute MCAS score, but the student growth percentile, which we would miss, which would cease to exist if we didn't have MCAS. And that's the one area of accountability that I think most people think is fair, because it's measuring growth, not absolute achievement. So I completely agree with the superintendent. I'm recommending a vote of no.
April?
I feel differently regarding MCAS, obviously. So I, while I do understand the need for data collection, I feel that what has, what MCAS is, what it started as is not where it is. I feel that the pressure for a lot of teachers and administrators to teach to the test or to use that as a graduation requirement, I feel is detrimental to students. I've seen the anxiety a lot of students have leading up to the test. Some students don't test well. I don't think it's an adequate measure for all students. While I do feel that having some sort of test to benchmark or measure growth is important, I don't know that it needs to be hinged on an all-or-nothing approach, which I feel like the MCAS has evolved into. I don't think it started that way. I think from a funding perspective, I think anything that's tied to funding becomes more black and white than it should be. And I think that looking into an alternative, while not necessarily making it a moratorium, I do agree with removing it as a graduation requirement. But I also think that having something there to have data to measure is important, but I don't know that it needs to be as, on a pedestal as it seems to be from an administrative perspective. I think that for, I think, parents and teachers, from anyone that I've spoken to or talked to, I also think this could be a completely, you know, it's going to depend. We also have an election prior to this resolution delegate where there is an MCAS ballot question. And I think that will also weigh heavy on how this resolution either will get possibly tabled pending that outcome. So I would, I would vote to present, to table this at the delegate assembly until, one, the results of the election, and, two, until they have an alternative. They said this, put a moratorium so that they can develop one. But I would think to table this and table ending it immediately until an alternative is actually researched and developed. So I personally think, not necessarily no, not necessarily yes, but I think tabling this at the assembly until, one, the election results, and, two, that there is an actual concrete alternative or at least a pathway, not the suggestion of a alternative, would be where I would go with that.
Joyce?
I just want to point out that at some point at a meeting in the past, we asked the high school principal about this at the high school, and there has not ever been a Wareham high school student who has not graduated because they didn't pass the MCAS. I just think that is interesting.
But this isn't just, this is statewide. The resolutions don't just represent Wareham.
Oh, no, I understand.
But some people, I'm just saying, some people might not understand. So I'm just making sure that everyone does, that it's not just a Wareham. While we have great educators and we know how our teachers work, that's not the case for some other districts that aren't as lucky as we are.
I was fine with the resolution minus the moratorium. Everything else is just investigating, looking into other pathways.
Exactly.
And then without the moratorium, because I don't think you can do that. I think you have to keep it going until there's something else that people would agree to be in its place. So I would need to suggest tabling or just striking out, no, we don't agree to the moratorium. But I'm just speaking for myself right now.
Honestly, I kind of feel the same way. I've never been a fan of MCAS. I've never talked to a teacher that I respected that, you know, I had when I was younger. Fortunately, I graduated right before MCAS started. I've never met a teacher that liked that. I've never met a teacher that could even play devil's advocate for it.
Well, you just did, because our superintendent...
Well, the teacher that I had, I'm saying, that, you know, when I was being educated and a lot of the things that it talks about in the warehouse here are things that I've heard that you end up teaching tests. You don't have time to do this. I, as far as being a graduation requirement, I have no problem with that. Not to be, you know, I know that social, emotional well-being is a concern, but saying that, you know, I don't test well. You don't, you don't do well when we ask you what you know? I mean, that, I know people don't test well, but they haven't found another way to figure out what you've learned. You kind of have to, you know, tests is the only way we know to do it. I don't particularly like the MCAS for a bunch of reasons, but we do need some instrument through which we can evaluate not only what our students are learning, but how we're teaching and, you know, what kind of absorption rate they're getting. So I kind of agree with Kevin there. If we can, you know, we can table it and just the moratorium on it right away, I don't support that, but everything else I'm fine with.
Jeff?
So my guess is that this is going to be a relatively controversial resolution at the assembly. So to give you some guidance, I too have a big problem with eliminating something and then hoping that at some point in the future they develop a superior alternative. But if this, if the moratorium, the elimination of MCAS was not part of this, and we simply lobbied for DESI to develop a superior alternative, which, I'm not saying it couldn't be developed. I mean, anything should be susceptible to reform if it makes it better. I'm perfectly comfortable with saying to DESI, keep working, you know, on MCAS to see if you can make it better and better and better.
So just so that I'm clear, should the therefore be it resolve that MASCE urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium is removed from this resolution, then collectively, this body would go forth with a yes in the development of an alternative? And should it not be, then we're okay with it voting to table pending further information?
I'm not sure what that means.
So like if at the...
What are we actually tabling?
The whole resolution at the assembly.
Oh, well, that's status quo, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so I'm just, because I make notes so that I bring the notes with me to the assembly so that I am our voice.
So I guess we have to do a vote on each one of these. So just quickly, I'll put something out there. Would I have a motion to accept the resolution without the moratorium language as exploration for something better going forward?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. That should be the most controversial one, but we'll see going forward here.
Well, the next one is actually mildly interesting, too.
So the increase, the compulsory attendance age. So in short, I believe that the statewide age for a student to decide on their own that they are able to withdraw from school is the age of 16. This resolution, which was sponsored by the Brockton School Committee, is upping this to the graduation age of 18.
Correct.
I would also like to hear the superintendent's thought on this.
I, so I, I'm leaning towards supporting this. I mean, having a high school education is so important, and anything that we can do to keep kids in school and engaged. I don't know how effective this would be, but if it does support that or if it does have that result, then I do support it.
Jeff?
I'm ambivalent about this. There's a part of me that says exactly what you just said. There's another part of me that's trying to imagine a kid being forced to stay two more years and negatively influencing the educational environment by a terrible attitude. So unless we have a curriculum that is amenable to engaging that student, which obviously the VoCTECs is one approach, but we all know there aren't enough VoCTEC slots in the Commonwealth, so there's a problem. I know we're working in this district on developing curriculum that might be of interest beyond the normal curriculum of a high school. So unless we make the same commitment to, if we do this, it seems to me we have to have a corresponding commitment to developing enough VoCTEC slots and enough varied curriculum to keep those kids engaged for two years. Otherwise, I think they have the potential for destroying the educational environment.
I agree 100%. Keeping them engaged from the 16 to 18, that's the challenge. The reason they're leaving is they're not engaged. So that's the next...
So we'll go right down the table here. We'll start with Joyce.
I was just going to say, so we, Jeff, you're right. You're developing other options. But we have a third option, which is the night school.
What are the annexes?
But not every, not every district has, again, the luxuries that Wareham has, and having that as an option for our student.
But we take in school choice. So if you are in a, if you're in a district that doesn't have their own night school, you can come to Wareham. And, you know, they're spread around, so students go to other... So there are, there are options. So I would be in favor of this, knowing that there is that option.
Do you, just a quick question. Do you believe that if a student has the option of staying in a regular high school or going to night school but not dropping out, that that would be sufficient to engage them and make sure their attitude? Because you'd hate to shift the bad attitude to the night school.
Yeah, not for every student. It's not going to be the right fit. But it is an option perhaps for some. And we've seen many kids in Wareham be successful in that.
Oh, agreed.
Yeah.
April?
So my thought on this with moving it from 16 to 18 is mixed because I, there's a lot of students who graduate at 17 based on, based on the fact that in Massachusetts, there's no set standard for the age cutoff for starting enrolling school. It's district by district. So you're going to have students of varying ages where 18 might feel like an eternity and then for a student who is 17, who is now enrolling in college and not turning 18 until they're already halfway through their freshman year. So I think 17 would be a more realistic age than 18, in my opinion, just because of the varying start times for students. I think 18, once a student's 18, they're a legal adult who is anyone to tell them anything. I think that's part of the problem is that, you know, ask an 18-year-old, they'll tell you they know everything. You know, I had one. But I think that, I think 18, without a statewide standard of start dates and age cutoffs, is tricky to add either anywhere from like one to two additional years to a student who might graduate in a shorter period of time. And for districts that don't necessarily have an alternative or if there's not a collaborative or anything that these students would have as an option, I don't think 18 is realistic. I think 17 is, in my opinion, a better alternative. It meets it in the middle. And then you have that wiggle room for those students with varying dates of birth depending on where their district's start date is.
Okay. Brennan?
My concern, and just thinking through this, is, you know, the kids that, you know, when we think of kids that are going to drop out at 16, we think, oh, they must, you know, be bad kids or kids that just aren't, you know, orientated towards school. But what about pregnant teen mothers? Is this going to affect their ability to go to night school while they can have their, you know, child be watched during the day? If they're going to be forced to attend, you know, day school if there's not a night school program for them, is this going to impact their ability to watch their child? And, you know, I know teen pregnancy is not as big of a concern as it once was, but it's still something to think about in kids with other situations like that, that...
This also doesn't highlight what the ramifications are for that two-year difference as well, for 16 to 18. Like whereas someone now in that younger age, you have school resource officers and court requirements in order for that student to have to, you know, go through that process or be, if there's an issue leading up to. So if you are removing that altogether, then what is the... So say a student decides to, you know, unofficially withdraw, right? And they're not, just not attending. What happens then? There's nothing that lays out what the ramifications are one way or another.
I assume that would just be the natural, you know, like if a kid didn't go to school now after a certain amount of time, truancy officers and what, you know, it'd be the same thing.
But you're adding, then you're adding two more years of work, and so do we hire an additional resource officers if now you have a higher span of people? I'm just saying, because this is statewide. So that's what these proposals are. This might not affect our district because we do have options, but a district like Brockton, who proposed this, who has a much larger population than we do, trying to keep students in school. And while I respect the idea behind it, Brockton had the National Guard threaten to be brought in to handle disciplinary issues at their school. So forcing students in that very tumultuous age gap to be forced to attend, I don't know necessarily how that's going to be received without an alternative, whereas I think meeting it more in the middle.
I'd rather just not.
And I'm able to abstain from votes as well. Like I don't have to vote one way or another, but if there is anything we want to amend or address, then I can. Or if it's just a black and white, like, yes, we agree, no, we disagree.
I don't have a problem with the 17-year-old recommendation necessarily with taking it one year at a time to see what impact that might have. Does that keep more kids in school potentially? I'm okay with that, but again, that's just me thinking a lot.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Pending, amending to 17 instead of 18.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm still incredibly ambivalent about this for the reasons I've already stated. But I suppose as an experiment, we can do it. But I'm not confident that it's the right move, so I'll abstain.
There's no guarantee it's going to pass the delegate assembly either, so...
4-0-1. Yes?
Chairman, I'm sorry. I know that we've passed public participation, but we do have a couple of folks here that did want to address the committee.
Okay.
And I know that we've got a lot in this, in these...
Yeah, well, with the permission of the rest of the committee, I'm willing to allow public participation right now.
That's fine.
Okay. So if you'd like to address the committee, please come up to the microphones. If you just state your name and then whatever issue it is you'd like us to consider.
Okay. My name is Patricia Chikatelli.
And my issue is that, this is my daughter, and she came to school here. We had a house, we rented it to her. And it's really been very difficult for her. She has a child that has learning disabilities. And first, there was a problem with the bus and the, then now there's a problem because the little girl got upset. And she has a, like a 51A taken against her. And she works really hard. She's really overcome a difficult life. And since she's, we've rented her our house, it's been miss, I mean, it's really been wonderful because to me, the girls seem so happy and they have kids over there enjoying everything else. But these two things have just made it so that she has, she works and comes in and out of town. And then she has to go to a meeting and she went to the doctor. The doctor said they did the wrong thing and this is what they need to be. But they said, well, it'll take seven weeks for us to take care of this little girl. So that's my problem.
Hi, I'm Amanda Keegan.
Sorry?
I'm Amanda Keegan.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. I'm here for the same reason. I'm new to this town, obviously, with my children. I prior was in Linkville, awesome, awesome school. And then in Carver, which is rather small, but yet schools are large since they have to be split up into two. My daughter has quite a bit of disability with learning ADHD diagnosis. Moving here has been a challenge in Wareham, especially with the schools. Buses are not connected to the school. So these are two separate situations. Yes, the buses have been trouble. My daughter no longer takes the bus, let's just say, because she was lost twice. Now my problem is with the school, the middle school to be exact. I had so much, like excitement for this because I felt like I went to school there. That's where I found myself. I found a teacher that took me in. Cindy Bliss, Mrs. Bliss, the best. I wanna say the best teacher you could ever get. Also, Jane Fondulus, still there, one of the, another best. So I really came in excited. So to be shot down, it's, I feel defeated. Yes, it was a 51A, which was basically, it's, she came to the house, she's like, I don't see it's going anywhere, all that. Because my daughter is upset. She is diagnosed, which I was told in a meeting today that it expires. She did have her diagnosis at Reed's. So, and it was in 2021. So I guess every three years it does expire, and I wasn't aware. So I am requesting more testing. They said that could take quite a bit. There's a backup. My concern is in with this, this time, and since there has been so many issues, and with it being just the beginning of the school year with so much, I'm worried on how the process is, and for her, and maybe for others in the same boat. She cannot be the only one. She can't. She's stressed, we're back to not wanting to go to school, we're back to not trusting the counselor, and she's distant now. Well, she goes into her own, like the pediatrician did write a report, I did send it out to everybody. I did have a meeting today. I was told that there is no attendance for the meeting, so there's no documentation. I was very surprised about that. We don't do documentation for meetings. I feel like they should be documented.
Have you reached out to the building principal and spoken to the principal?
Yes, I actually have an email today because I was surprised at that. I said, oh, I noticed we did not take attendance. I would just, I'm giving you this information from the pediatrician, like I said, gave it to every, every party at that meeting, including her teachers, the counselor, just stating this is Emma's background. This is Emma. Emma's hard. Emma's different. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I confess, I'm a little confused. If I handed you a magic wand, what would you, what would you do with it to make your life better? What, what are you hoping will, you can change?
What I want to change is the services for children with disabilities.
So you're saying the services that we're currently providing through our student services department are not meeting your child's needs?
Exactly.
Actually, if you don't mind me asking, and again, my child has special needs, is the prob, do you guys have a, why am I blanking all of a sudden on the name of it?
She did have a 504 plan.
Advocate?
Yeah, 504.
And I just hired an advocate today, which is also my lawyer, and which is certified for advocacy.
So it's a 504, it's not, you don't have an IEP?
She had an IEP and I'm requesting, actually, and so is the pediatrician, requesting a reevaluation so we can provide her with an IEP again.
Okay.
So how far, how, how far have you taken your concerns? Meaning, there, there is a process for you to go through to get satisfaction for your, for the education of your child. How far have you taken this? Is this, have you just now taken it to the principal? Have you?
No, I have, I do have written emails, yes. But it is the beginning of the year, so it's as far as two weeks and a half. And I know that's early, but the family's struggling, she's struggling, and being told that it's gonna take up to another month and a half. Since it's only two weeks and a half, what is gonna happen within a month or more?
So she's currently, she's currently getting services?
No.
None?
None.
So she's not on an IEP right now?
No.
Okay. So there's no IEP right now. So there is a process that has to be followed, and there's timelines that we have to follow as a school district by law, by state law, that I, I trust are being followed.
Since the school can't do anything, what can I do? I'm trying my best, to be honest.
I, I completely understand and feel your frustration because I, even as a school committee member when my son was in the school district, I had filed a complaint with Desi because stuff wasn't being followed. So I understand 1,000% where you're coming from as, as a parent with frustration. You said you went to the, the teacher, the principal, and then?
Teachers are great.
Did you, all right, so you went, you brought your concern to the principal, and then to the superintendent, and then to us?
I went to the superintendent only for the bus situation. I have it, and that's why I'm here, is I just wanna see everybody. That's why I'm here. I'm, I'm here for the next step.
So has your...
But I think the next step would have been to see the superintendent about this issue after you've talked to the principal, quite honestly, before you, you're welcome to speak to us, obviously. But before that, I would, I would urge you to have a meeting with the superintendent.
And the director of student services definitely should be involved in that as well.
Well, I'm here to learn. Because I haven't had, I haven't had this problem with any other town.
Has your, do you have copies of whatever, because usually, from my understanding, is that an IEP, regardless of district, would follow your child and you'd present that to the next...
It was last year, I was told today.
IEPs don't expire, but the other ones?
The 504 expires.
And there is no, because they changed it to a, a 504, she has to have testing again to get an I.
Has she had an, a neuropsych evaluation through either a district or through your...
Reed's Collaborative.
Okay, and you have, and you've presented copies of that?
To me today, that was expired too because it was 2021.
Okay, so I don't wanna get into weeds in a public meeting about this, but I think in terms of process, I would urge you to make an appointment with the director of student services, Melissa Fay. That would probably be the best, the next logical step at this point.
I just wanna say as a parent, like, and I, I can understand your frustration completely. If we, if I didn't have an IEP for Jacob, I don't know why I would do, but I can tell you that once you get there, you're gonna be so satisfied.
I just want it to be easier for her.
My child is on the autism spectrum. He's very unique. He needs a lot of, you know, help. But I'll tell you something, I've gotten it. I've gotten it every year since kindergarten. He's a senior, he's going to college in the spring. You know, the help is, like, like, that's why when you said it, I was originally like, I don't understand what's wrong because I've never had an issue. I have had, the, the special needs services in this town, in my opinion, are top-notch, so I, anything we can do to help you get them.
But I didn't have any, my mom was, my mom at the time wasn't a mom. She was absent 100% till I was taken in. So I understand that, and, and that's why I'm shocked, because this is different from what I knew when I was here. That's all.
Have you had a chance to meet one-on-one with the principal of the middle school yet? You, you have?
Mrs. Cote.
Right, you met with her individually? Okay.
And I do like her because I know, I've known her on a personal level as well. So it's just hard, it's hard to get through these walls. That's all I'm saying. It's hard, and it's made it hard for the family. It's made it very stressful.
And that is it. It's like every one of these meetings is another, you know, I have to call a client and tell them I can't meet them.
I just, it's, it's affecting work financially, her emotions, her motions. That's the biggest thing, is that she's struggling. That's all.
Anyway, they told you.
Okay.
And I'll take the next steps, like you said.
Yes, please, yeah.
I'll take the next steps, and I'll keep on taking steps, and taking steps, and taking steps. I don't quit.
Can I call you tomorrow?
Yeah, of course you can. I'm willing to get as much as I possibly can. That's what I'm here for.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll jump back to our original agenda item number seven in mask resolutions. We are on resolution number three.
This is a repeat one, isn't it?
It sounds like it.
We've had this before.
This was, I believe, on last year's resolution, and I want to say this may have been tabled for further, which I believe they have included references. I don't know, I don't remember that they did.
So then one basically says the superintendent or designee needs to inform parents in the community about locking up their firearm station.
Which I say is not the job. I mean, it's an important subject, certainly. I'm not saying it's not important, but I say it's not the job of the superintendent to do that.
If I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
I mean, I agree where it says create, you know, the superintendent and staff create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians explains, I mean, yes, I can say it's important, but to be honest with you, I don't know the best way to secure fire. I don't have a firearm, so it just seems to me, I, what I would do is I would ask the police to help me to put something together. I mean, I, I agree with Joyce.
Which is the second...
It's a good idea.
The second part of this is to work in conjunction with local law enforcement and health agencies. So I would read this as should, like Carl or Wareham PD, Wareham Fire have any sort of help, representation or recommendations about this, that we simply share that information to our, on like our website as information only, not as a directive from the school?
But that's not what it says.
But that, yeah, but that's how I would, like, it, it's just for us to encourage people to make sure that kids are safe, which, given the climate of the world, which obviously, right. What we say, obviously, and yet tragedy strikes sadly far too often because maybe there aren't reminders on, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I know that this might be a small step to a possible solution because it is, it makes it talked about. And maybe that's all they need is to hear about it. I don't know.
Jeff?
I'm comfortable voting yes on this because, you know, let's, this is going to be turned into some kind of, of, I guess, regulation. And I'm comfortable letting the people who write this stuff take it and run with it in the spirit of what the, what it is saying. And yes, secure, secure storage of a firearm is important. And yes, getting local law enforcement involved to helping to make that possible is important. And so I'm going with the spirit of this, and I'm comfortable saying yes.
Again, the way that I look at it, I mean, it seems almost common sense, but it doesn't seem like there's going to be much cost involved with that. I mean, really, if I'm reading it right, it sounds like a good idea for superintendents to get in touch with their police and say, what's the best thing we could tell parents about storing their firearms, preventing the, you know, children to get to it? Posting it on the website, done. Be satisfied the require, I, I'm for it.
Joyce?
Well, I'm not against it. I'm just saying, not, not every town, apparently in Massachusetts even, has a good relationship with their police department, right? Sometimes schools and the police department, they don't, as, as much as we are so fortunate that we partner with the police and the fire department. So I guess, I'm not against this, and I would just say that if it were, if, that it were passed and the, and the mask directed all superintendents to create this communication, we would say, okay, reach out to the police department. You know, that's how you would create it. And, and again, not every town in Massachusetts is as fortunate as we are to have that partnership.
Let's keep in mind, there's, it's a long way from this
I know, I know.
to regulations and laws, et cetera. This is just guidance for lobbying efforts, as April said in the beginning.
Okay.
So if they wanna lobby on behalf of that, fine with me.
You're right.
Well, let's see where we stand. Do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
Yes. So moved. Second.
So moved by Brennan, seconded by Jeff.
First, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
To, to vote yes on three.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed or abstained?
I'm not opposed, don't...
Did you vote aye? Okay, so 500. Thank you.
So resolution four is School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties. So this is to make sure that, I believe, law enforcement action has taken place should the, the arm or the stop sign of a school bus be ran past, be gone around.
So moved.
Seconded.
And that the, allowing for the installation utilization of digital detection monitoring systems for the bus arm. A lot of buses do have cameras, as ours do.
Not everyone has an arm, though.
Right. So this would be for the ones that have arms or especially for anything with the flashing lights, so that the law, basically allowing law enforcement, I think, to look at our survey and be able to penalize people who break the law of running past a school bus and endangering children.
This just creates documentation of what every bus driver knows happens, but they don't, are unable to prove it.
Yeah.
And it's not a mandate that you have to, because of course, there's a funding issue there.
Right.
It gives you the ability.
Right, so it's passing the law, the ability for this to happen, to install it.
Since we have cameras, we could then overturn that, or any of our stuff over to law enforcement, and then they would punish the person, license plate, et cetera.
Except the cameras are not directed in the correct direction to see it, I believe.
I believe that when we, this was also talked about at last year's delegation, and I believe was tabled, probably, I think to this one, there was some discussion on it before it was held last year. It's got a little, oh, all dicey with time. But I believe that part of looking into this, I believe, law, is, is looking into law enforcement grants for the surveillance at some point as well, but...
So we actually had a motion and a second already. So I believe, you made the motion, Jeff?
Motion, second.
Oh, Brennan made the motion, Jeff seconded it. So I will just ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 500. So we support that resolution.
So resolution five is aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution.
Huh?
So basically, there be resolved that the Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation that would increase the municipality's levy limit by the amount of increase of the required local contribution in excess of 2.5%, granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenues mandated by MGL Chapter 70.
Much clearer.
Jeff won't educate us on this.
So, yeah, basically, basically what this is trying to do is get around Proposition Two and a Half. It's that simple. And it also takes the state off the hook in terms of making sure that Chapter 70 truly reflects what each individual community needs based upon their wealth, property wealth and their income. And I would not want to defend to the citizens of Wareham that we're, we're allowing the states to pass a regulation that over, overcomes essentially Proposition Two and a Half, because it's an override, basically. And so I, I think we have to vote no, and I don't wanna take Desi off the hook or the state off the hook to give, to give Wareham sufficient funds to educate their children.
Thank you for that.
Agreed.
Does that make sense?
Does.
Yes, okay.
Well, do I have a motion to vote on this res, well?
Motion to...
Well, you can say a motion to accept the resolution, we'll just vote no, potentially.
Well, yeah.
Motion to reject the resolution.
We can do that too. Depends on your motion.
Either way, yeah.
So who's, you, Brennan making the motion to reject?
Motion to reject the resolution.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of rejecting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 500.
So resolution six is supportive legislation to improve the fiscal health of rural school districts.
Sponsored by Deerfield.
Um, so this is basically urges legislation to pass comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from Legislative Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural Schools Report, A Sustainable Future for Rural Schools. I, again, I don't know, this is very district-specific, where it doesn't really affect us one way or the other. We're, we're technically not considered a rural school district. However, demographically, when you look at a lot of our comparative data, we tend to fall in line, Wareham, with more rural school districts demographically. So we do sort of fall in that same line with them because that's where we're compared when you look at a lot of the, the comparative district data, based on demographics, income, and accessibility. So in that regard, we are similar because those are the districts that we're more likely compared to as opposed to even our neighboring districts. But we wouldn't, I, I don't believe that we would fall under the, the fiscal health, But we wouldn't, I, I don't believe that we would fall under the, the fiscal health, the rural school district for this. I don't think this would affect us one way or the other, aside from any, any data changes that would be enacted with this.
Again, I mean, I personally just pushed this to the legislature, and if they can help rural schools, fine.
Yeah.
And so I would, I would make a motion that we accept this, with the idea that, again, this is just the beginning of a process.
It's just to move it to legislation, so it-
I mean, the issue is, let's start with the, with the fact that we know there's a finite amount of resources. It's finite. So if you take more to help rural school districts, there'll be less to help districts such as Wareham, although I agree with April, occasionally we're described as a rural or herborural school district, we're a, we're a sort of a hybrid.
We're an anomaly.
We're somewhat of an anomaly, that's correct. So to the extent that they are, you know, and plus, remember, the therefore includes to pass the comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from the Legislative Committee. Well, some of those reg, reg, recommendations are in the whereases, and it, basically, it's trying to rescue rural school districts who are suffering from even more loss of students than we are. You know, they're really in desperate shape, and they're regionalizing, they're doing everything possible, but of course, when you regionalize and you have tremendous distances for kids to travel to get to these regional schools, that's a problem. So it, it's a problem, but I don't have any, I don't have any illusion that this is gonna make much of a difference, but I can vote for it.
So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Very sympathetic.
Okay, so resolution seven, seven is fully adjusting Chapter 70 aid for inflation.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Everybody should understand, it's currently capped, and this would take off the cap.
Mm-hmm. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Of course, if the Federal Reserve seems to have done its job, and it may not be a problem in the future, but we can hope.
So this is one that possibly could affect us. I know that one of the things that Kristin Flynn discusses with us is transportation and out-of-district transportation, and some of those runs being quite lengthy. This is Resolution Eight, it's equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs.
Yeah, so just as an FYI, and don't ask me how many years ago this was true, but if you go back far enough on the cherry sheets, you can actually see transportation grants, aid for non-regional school districts. And at some point, maybe a decade ago, I'm showing my age, they just got rid of it. And they said, well, we'll just include that in regular state aid. Right, exactly.
I think they also possibly tried to hide it by highlighting McKinney-Vento. So it sort of went under the radar, because McKinney-Vento is what we hear and talk about and get reimbursed for.
Except that that's very specialized.
Correct, but I think by them talking about that, this was able to get sort of under the radar from what you had been talking about previously, but this will hopefully help with the Extraordinary Roots Relief Fund.
What we don't know is the definition of higher transportation costs, because everybody's transportation cost has risen dramatically for a variety of reasons. So bottom line, I still, but Joyce has a comment. I'll throw my motion until she makes her comment.
No, my only comment is I see this is sponsored by the Plymouth School Committee, so Plymouth is a gigantic town, so I'm sure their transportation. And April, you talk about Kristin and talking about high transportation costs, those costs, I think, if she were here, she would maybe say that those are related to out-of-district, because those are private companies that are charging us, what, and sometimes whatever they want, as opposed to our own transportation costs within town. So that's the difference. And I don't see here, it doesn't say-
Well, this says to offset transportation, including but not limited to the purchase and maintenance of buses, fuel costs, and driver salaries.
Right, so it's nothing, if we have to hire a private company to take a student to a school in Falmouth-
Well, that's reimbursed by a separate-
Right, so I'm just saying that those, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just saying there's ways for them to get out of it, that's all. You know, there's different categories of transportation, that's all.
Wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, I support it, and even regular transportation, not just out-of-district, but that is clearly a major problem. Even regular transportation costs, and I don't begrudge the drivers this, but the driver, cost of drivers is much more expensive, you name it, fuel, tires. Diesel fuel is off the charts, we all go buy regular gasoline, and, and diesel fuel is what, a buck more than regular now? So it's, it's, the whole area is expensive, and we benefit tremendously by not having to outsource it. We have our own transportation department. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
So resolution nine is MSBA Grants Evaluation for Chapter 74, which is for vocational, technical, and agricultural schools, and that the MSBA assessment is, it, it's to create an evaluated tiered system sep, to separately assess the cost of elementary, comprehensive high schools, and then vocational, technical, and agricultural schools, so that each category is, there, I guess the funding is based off of the category, whereas some technical schools, MSBA, like if they have different shops that require, or that would, or agricultural, like farming equipment, things like that, I believe, anything like, would the cost incurred to create those facilities would be somewhat different than a standardized classroom, is the way I'm understanding that.
This is actually kind of interesting, because they're saying two things. They're saying increase the capacity of the voc techs, which would obviously mean that they would draw more from a district such as ours, but it also says to create programs at existing high schools that would be compatible with Chapter 74. So, you know, we could offset losses to the voc tech, especially when the voc tech doesn't have capacity.
So like for our, the proposed childcare type situation, that that would help with that, where we could request MSBA funding for some, a project like that.
So I, I, I think it's actually somewhat cleverly written, I have no idea whether it will gain traction at the state legislative level, but I would support it.
I agree.
Any motions on the floor?
I make a motion that we support this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Okay, and then finally, resolution ten is expansion in capacity in Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Programs. So I believe that what this is looking to convene a special commission to consider changes to the current law and regulation relating to the overall authority of the MSBA, alternative overall financing structures, standards for project eligibility, appropriate financial assistance based on the nature of the school and the projects being considered. So I think this is almost like a two-part for what you-
Yes, exactly.
-said, so this is more like the second part to the first part, so I think if we vote yes for one, we should vote yes for the other.
Is it true that Chapter 74 schools serve a higher percentage of students with IEPs and 504s?
I doubt it. I, I, that surprises me.
I read that and I thought the same thing.
It's very hard to believe that those students-
I can't, I, I don't believe that, but-
I think it's also gonna be region, I think that's school depend, like region-dependent. It might not be necessarily true for our local regional vocational school, but it might be for others in other parts of the state that have different criteria than ours does.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I'm gonna abstain on this one, so four, zero, one.
So there's also some expiring resolutions. There are, I believe, 11 of them that were proposed in, they expire after three years if they hadn't been moved to legislation. So if there are any in that, that we believe should be reconsidered, they are able to be re-proposed, but if there's any of these that we, that are listed in the packet that you believe would be helpful to consider moving them forward instead of allowing them to expire?
And at the conference, is it ultimately your group of delegates that's gonna decide whether or not these then go forward?
I believe so. It would be brought, someone from the delegation would bring it up, and I don't believe that they would be discussed or voted on, but they would just be re, they would be allowed to be reintroduced, I believe, at next year's assembly, as almost like a new or renewed resolution. Because typically, we vote on 10 annually, because otherwise, we're there forever.
To use Jeff's words, I'm kind of ambivalent on most of these, but I don't have a problem with them, if looking at them again.
Yeah, so if we, if everyone wants to look at them, and maybe we can decide at the next meeting whether or not we, if there's any-
I don't think it needs to take up an agenda item for the next meeting.
No, I'm okay with, personally, I'd be making a motion saying, fine, go forward with, let, be discuss all of them, whichever one of the delegates choose to keep, keep going on, I'd be fine with that.
So, all right.
So, so I guess we'll-
So dependent on the outcome of the delegate assembly, we'll just move forward and reassess them at that time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Another, another matter related to the resolutions.
Sure.
So I have a mission for you, should you choose to accept it, to use Mission Impossible verbiage. It would be fascinating to know, it would be fascinating to know what percentage of the resolutions that get passed actually produce legislation that has an impact.
We've asked about that before, I don't know, is that something they report back to you?
Um, they might.
And want to raise that question during the assembly, you would be doing Glenn Kuchar a favor.
I was gonna say, who's, that's exactly who I would be asking.
To let him know you're going to be asking that question.
So he has the answer ahead of time?
So he can't punt and say, I'll get back to you.
All right, I will, I will ask that question if he knows it, and I will give him the formal heads-up that I intend to ask it at the delegate assembly.
You can even tell my former classmate that it was my idea.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I'm sure he'd appreciate knowing that.
I think he'll know, coming from this district, who actually asked the question. I don't think I'm, I don't think he'd be shocked in any way, shape, or form, but I am, as always, very excited for the delegate assembly, it is my favorite part of the MSB conference.
Remember, if you don't show up, I'm gonna be really ticked off.
'Cause then you're gonna have to, oh, I won't be, the only one time I had to miss it, it was 'cause they moved the day, and I was devastated. I was upset for a long time, but that is all that I have for that, so my part is done.
We trust you.
We trust you, now that you have all-state status at school committee, you're gonna be, you're gonna be up there.
Is it all-state or all-district?
That's crazy.
All, all-district, correct.
All-district.
All right, so last on our school committee items tonight is the superintendent contract. So we met at executive session this, this evening to discuss this. We voted to extend the superintendent's contract for one year, a couple of months ago in August, so that would take his contract through fiscal year 25, 26. I have met with the superintendent to negotiate the contract, and the proposal is to increase his salary by 2.75% for that last year, for fiscal year 25, 26. Is there any further discussion that we would like to have in public?[1693.86]